All right, I'll call the meeting to order. We have to elect the chair. Doesn't matter if it's a chair, you just have to facilitate and run the meeting. I did tell Dr. Jim before you guys attended I might be late tomorrow or Thursday. Unlikely, but potentially, and I don't want to hold up the meeting. So if you elect me as the chair and I don't arrive here at six o'clock Wednesday or Thursday, Dr. Jim can just run the meeting until I show up. Or either of you want to be the chair, that's fine. I know you guys are first-year board members and probably don't want to do that, but I'm offering it if you'd like.
Thank you for the offer. I would nominate one of you.
All right, you want rock, paper, scissors? Or you just want to make a motion?
Do a motion.
What do you mean?
Just say...
Someone make a motion.
Who's going to make a motion and we'll go for it.
Make a motion for Dr. Jim.
All right, I'll second him. Two seconds.
Chris, we just screwed up again.
All right.
All right, then I'll chair the meeting.
All right, go.
Except I'll turn it over to the authorities, the guests who've got the information we're going to be dealing with tonight. So the two of you get going.
Thank you, Dr. Jim. Absolutely. First, we're going to hand out our personnel sheet. So I'm going to provide an introduction to this whole process. For, you know, we have two new board members on the committee and some people in the audience. So just briefly, the budget process starts even in the summer, but it starts September and October when principals work with team leaders and department heads to determine what they're bringing to the SAU office. In October, principals and directors sit with the superintendent and the business administrator to go over their building-based budgets. As a result, we have careful and responsible proposals for the board. We then prepare for the finance committee meetings that are occurring this week. The next stop will be full-board proposed preliminary review of the full budget, and that will be in December, followed by January 5th for adoption. The board will vote on the budget for adoption. And then, of course, we have deliberative on January 31st. And we encourage all voters to come on March 10th to support our budget and Warren articles. So the SAU process, we carefully review the budget sheets that the principals bring to us. You will have sheets each night based on who is presenting that night. I've given you a schedule of how we will organize these three nights. So tonight is myself, the introduction, and personnel, followed by the middle school, high school, Career Tech Center, and facilities. Tomorrow night, we have all the elementary principals presenting one right after the other. And then Thursday is the district-wide presentation. So we have technology, curriculum, special education, and the SAU. So it is that night when we put all of the budgets together, and that's when the board reviews it, and, excuse me, that's when you vote to send it to the full board, okay? So that's how the process works as far as budget process, the SAU process, and the finance committee meeting schedule. So I'll touch on personnel now. And with personnel comes some program changes that we are pretty excited about. So district-wide, some of these positions we proposed last year. So unfortunately, as we all know, the budget did not pass, so we were not able to move these positions forward. So we're bringing most of the same positions forward that the board approved last year. So starting with the, and a few new ones, a few new changes. So starting with the district level, we are bringing back the maintenance technician. So we've talked about this before in that our maintenance staff is everywhere, and we definitely could use more personnel in our maintenance department. So you'll hear more about that when Kathy talks about the facilities. I will say, all of these positions and programs I'm talking about, you're going to hear about them again. So when, you know, I talk about high school level, you'll hear that again through that principal. The middle school, New Durham, Osiphe, Tuftonboro, Effingham, and Special Ed. You will hear about these positions again when those administrators present. I'm giving you an overview of all the personnel because it is a big part of the full proposal that we're bringing to you this week. So district-wide maintenance, that is something that came forward last year, and the board supported us. The next position is the homeless liaison. So McKinney-Bento is the homeless law, and we've had our homeless liaison within our Title II grant for a very long time. The grants are a little more tentative these days, and this is a required service that we provide for students who are in transition and they are experiencing homelessness. So our proposal is to move that out of the grants, thereby freeing grant monies for professional development and other pieces for our staff. We have a new position, finance manager and laying-off administrative assistant. These are two at the SAU office. So we have found that we need more support specifically around finance. We have a very large district. We need support in accounting. We need support in grants management. We need support in reporting and auditing. And however, we realize that we do not have the resources to add a position without eliminating a position. So we looked at our staff and can reduce by an administrative assistant so that we can make space for a finance manager. Now, finance manager is a higher, more expertise required for that position, so we are proposing a higher wage for that position, obviously, than the admin assistant position. We're also bringing back from last year the special education administrative assistant for the middle school. So this has been part-time for several years, and it remains part-time now. This absolutely needs to go to full-time to support our special education DPT and staff at the middle school. It's a very high caseload, and that administrative support is essential, so we're bringing that back to be full-time. At the high school, so first I'll talk about the reduction in force for math. So this was a very difficult, a very difficult decision that we had to come to. I will say, you know, when Kathy and I meet with every single principal every year, we have to look at class sizes. We, of course, look at their budgets, but we also have to look at personnel. So per our policy, we have to look at class sizes and consider how many classes have 12 or fewer students. Sometimes those can, they can exist and keep going because of the nature of that class. And other times, we need to, we realize we're overstaffed, and we need to reduce in order to strike that balance with providing enough staff and programs for kids while also being fiscally responsible. So in looking at the number of classes that have fewer than 12 students at the high school, I asked Katie Hills, our assistant superintendent, previously director of curriculum, who, she also created the master schedule last spring. I asked her to do a deep dive and look at, are there places at the high school where we could reduce without impacting students' programming? Based on the numbers, we could have reduced by more teachers. However, we're not willing to propose that because it would impact programming. She did recommend reducing by one math teacher, however, because we can comfortably reduce by one teacher in that area. Onto the new positions. So new positions that we are proposing for the high school. One special education teacher and one paraprofessional. What we plan to do is not renew the embusman contract, which is over $300,000 in contracted services. That has had the spotlight shine on it in the budget process in recent years. What we would like to do is not renew that contract and bring that program in-house. We have space for that on campus. We want to rebrand it from Lakeside Academy to Kingswood Academy and to bring those students back on campus. This is helpful in many ways. It still provides the alternative programming, but it means that those students can still access special education. They don't have to exit our whole program. They can still access the state diploma. They can still go to LRTC for part of the day and participate in that online programming. And they still have the benefit of the staff on campus. We wouldn't be leasing a separate location, and we'd be canceling that contract. So this, these two new proposals right here, you know, the teacher wage and the para-wage, that is a fraction of what the embusman contract was. I think it's a third. It's around a third of what that contract was. I want to thank Nicole Achanz and Gray Sherman for proposing that and being such a champion and passionate about this program to bring it back for our students. We feel, and Nicole shared this data, that some students who aren't even at Lakeside Academy because they signed out to be homeschooled would stay with us because we can still offer more support there. We're also talking with Carroll Academy in order to keep our students dual-enrolled so that we can capture some of that adequacy funding. So this shift and the energy behind this from our staff is going to bring, is going to bring revenue back into our district in this area where we were sending a lot of money out to contracted services. So we're very excited about that, about that shift.
How much was the embusman contract?
Over $300,000 a year.
It was over $300,000. How much was the lease?
The lease was part of it.
The lease was part of that? So it was over $300,000? It was like...
It depended on the seats. So they gave us two choices every year. It was like 330 or 430 based on the seats.
Okay. And so we bring this in now. The paraprofessional, that's just salary with that paraprofessional gift benefits?
These are just wages, yes. Although you can see the total at the bottom, total with benefits.
I'm just wondering, though, this paraprofessional, this new one?
I do believe so. I can pull up the...
Okay, because I noticed it's only budgeted $22,477. That seems low for wages. So I was just wondering if it was part-time or full-time? And I was assuming it was part-time, but maybe I'm incorrect?
We would want full-time. So we'll check that number. To make sure we're proposing full-time.
That's all?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're very excited about that, about that proposal. So next, at, no changes for LRTC, no proposals there. For New Durham School, we did look at the numbers, and they have two teachers at kindergarten, and then they have two teachers in another grade level. This does say grade five because the two teachers are at that level at this time. However, it may not necessarily be one specific teacher. There has to be reassignments, you know, before the end of the school year. However, we found that due to the numbers, we can reduce by one teacher at New Durham. I can share that Carpenter, no change. Osiphe, so I will share that at Osiphe. There is one grade level that has three teachers, and the number of students are hovering around 12 students in each class. Now, in speaking, and you'll hear about this tomorrow night, but in speaking with Andrea Fornier, the principal at Osiphe, I'm willing to advocate to keep those three teachers at that location because they, it's Osiphe and the middle school where we have the most trouble filling paraprofessional positions. Osiphe has six full-time paraprofessional positions that we have not filled. And so what we did there as a compromise is to reduce by two paraprofessional positions so that we won't... It's not a perfect trade-off, but it is to, as a way to offset keeping those three principals, those three teachers for that grade level. It's, we're just not filling those full-time positions at that school. So that is a way to offset the cost for those teachers. Now, next, what we're bringing back, Tuftonboro and Effingham, the 100% DPT. So last year, we proposed, you know, they already had a 35%, I think, and 45% DPT. They both had that in the principal contract, but the GUAT contract passed. So meaning, in that contract for the administrators, they negotiated to be 100% principals, both the Effingham principal and Tuftonboro principal, instead of having part of their position be for a diagnostic prescriptive teacher, being that case manager. So in that, it was already approved to have a...
70%.
70% DPT. So that's what we have in place this year. However, we know that due to those caseloads and the demands on a special ed case manager, we would like to increase that position to be a 100% DPT position. So it already exists at 70%, so we are proposing, we're bringing that back from last year. We're proposing to increase that position to 100%. So it means increasing by 15% for both schools. Do you see that there? Question?
Yeah, that's good. In that DPT preschool position, that's in Osiphe, correct?
That's another story which I can explain.
Okay, so it's in a different location? Because last year, we had mentioned that we needed the full-time DPT for the Osiphe preschool program.
Yes, I can get into that. Are you all, are you all set with the DPT for Tuftonboro, Effingham?
Oh, sorry, I moved on.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Yes, no, I knew because we have to, that has to do with the GUAT agreement.
That's the GUAT agreement, yes.
That passed.
So the one you're referencing, the DPT preschool. So as you're probably all aware, we have preschool at New Durham and at Osiphe. However, we are legally required to provide preschool programming for any student with a disability in all our towns. So what do we do? Some students in the northern region, we find services for them at Osiphe. And in the southern part of the district, they go to New Durham. Now, of course, we have a large population in the Wolfboro area. All of those students go to the Wolfboro Children's Center at this time. So, and it's many students, many students who are, and we have to evaluate as early as two and a half. They're students ages three and four. So you can imagine, for one DPT, currently, we have one preschool DPT, this position is all over the district. All over the district for all these kids to case manage, to evaluate, to run those meetings. And it's a lot. It's a lot, and it's just barely doable. It's very difficult. And that's, that's an area where we do see an increased identification of students who require services. So we're bringing that back to propose another pre... So as far as the location, it could be that one is more northern and one is more southern, but I have a feeling that they might split Wolfboro. Or one might do Wolfboro and one is on either side of the district. That's something that the special education department, they're going to talk more about that on Thursday night, okay?
Good.
Now, the only, well, two other things. One other position that you may not, that you don't see on here is the student wellness coordinator. So the student wellness coordinator is a position we proposed last year. It got a lot of attention. People wanted to know, what does this person do? What is the job description? Well, it's something that's in the strategic plan under the wellness focus area, student wellness focus area. And the plan for that position was and is to oversee our nurses. Our nurses are going to be moving to the district budget because the Huggins contract is ending. It's also to facilitate increasing meals to students. And it's also, the job description would also include supervising counselors across the district. So that is still a priority, but we will propose, in our proposal at the December meeting, is to have that in a separate Warren article. That position is unique. It's new. And, you know, it, like I said, it brought a lot of attention last year. So my opinion is that it deserves its own time to shine separately, not to impact this budget, and allow the community to vote on that separately so that if it passes, we know clearly it stands alone and it passes on its own. But I didn't want to not propose that at all this year when, of course, I see the value in it. We all see the value in it, and it's part of the board's approved strategic plan. So that's where that lives. Any questions on personnel before we move on?
I have two questions. Go for it. My first question is the homeless liaison. Is this there? Could you describe what the day-to-day activities is at that position? What their role would be, and is there... Don't want to sound like heartless, but, you know, I find it hard to believe that there's enough homelessness in our school district that would warrant a full-time position.
I don't, but I know it's...
I should get, I'll get that number for you before the end of our meeting.
Okay.
We have, we have a lot. She's very busy. The legal requirements for McKinney-Bento liaison include, so you have to have a best interest meeting when you have a student who is experiencing homelessness to determine where they go to school. Because, you know, you might imagine someone who's homeless, they might be doubled up at a friend's house. They might be living in a tent. They might be at a friend's house, quote, couch surfing. They might be an unaccompanied youth where they're 17 and they're not with their parents. The work of the homeless liaison is that they have to, you know, if this is still our sending district for that student, meaning they started with us, even if they're, you know, couch surfing or temporarily housed outside of our district, they're still our student. That's where the law comes in so that they don't have to change schools all the time. So what this means is that that employee needs to have meetings with people from that town. They need to seek payment reimbursement because we share transportation costs with DHHS and that other town, and then our town. So there's a lot of coordination with that piece. It could be the case that we're the sending district and they actually attend, so the best interest meeting is such that they attend another school. So then they have to coordinate that from the other side of things. And so all of these situations, every single student has a lot of coordination that needs to happen. There's, sometimes there's mileage reimbursement to, you know, a grandparent or someone else who is, you know, in the home if they're self-transporting instead of our transportation. There are many, many different scenarios for students who are, you know, it depends on their situation. Sometimes, you know, it depends on the reason that they are homeless. Sometimes there are some really challenging situations as to why the parents no longer have a home. They could be, you know, there could be some substance abuse issues. There could be some mental health issues. And so we do a lot of coordinating and connecting them with community resources. So there are a lot of, a lot of things that go on there.
There's a lot of meetings that happen. It's pretty labor-intensive with the amount of meetings and travels they have to do, and there's a lot of administrative work that they have to be committed to. So I understand. Okay. My last question is about the SRO. How many, how many SROs are currently at the Kingswood Complex?
So we have two.
We still do have two.
So we have the one that is, you know, the high school SRO. And then, I think it was two years ago, where the Kingswood Complex SRO was approved. I am, I don't have a proposal on that for you. However, I have been meeting with the chief and talking about what that programming looks like for the other SRO. He is starting a JROTC, Club After School. So we're really excited about that because the vision is for that to grow, include high school students, maybe further down the road, become a program during the day. I have seen a really successful program in my previous district where there are students in those classes run by the, you know, whether it's the Marines, they all, you know, the branches have programs in schools. Students can get phys ed credit. It can be really great for a lot of kids. So this is just the start of that. The other piece we're talking to them about is some kind of, I think I mentioned this at a board meeting, a drug and alcohol awareness program, and middle school is the place for that to start. We also have the SROs involved in the care team, which is the behavior intervention team, to intervene for students who are exhibiting signs of self-harm or harm to others. So, so we're talking about that because we're looking at the data as far as, you know, do we need two SROs in the schools based on the incidents? So it is good news that the incidents have gone down.
I follow the reports. That's why I ask.
Yeah, yeah.
The incidents have gone down. But I do see the resources that they provide. But I also wonder if, if a full-time daily presence is necessary to, to be able to provide those resources and deal with those incidents, especially with enrollment continuing to go on.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's like you have a crystal ball because I just met with Wolfboro PD, and we're meeting with the principals tomorrow morning to talk about this.
Okay. May, if I may, may not hurt for Chief Warren to consider. Might be too short to ask for him to come on Thursday, but maybe to our December board meeting if it's something that the board wants to discuss.
I...
Hopefully goes a little bit different than the last very prolonged discussion we had, but maybe to, you know, if that's appropriate. I don't know. I'd like to learn more because it seems like in, whatever in the SRO reports is that it's shifted less from a reporting of these basic statistics and vague, you know, incidents or, you know, events, you know, we had all these different jargon that were used. And now is, the reports seem more geared towards, yeah, events happen. There, you know, it seems like only the more significant ones are in the reports documented. And we're seeing more of them providing a resource to students. But the question is, you know, could, could one SRO deal with events and provide those resources versus two, and I know when we first approved this, the board was quite hesitant because we were like, seems like the statistics were inflated. And it seems like our stats are coming back down to what they were previously to what we thought might have been inflated statistics. And it seems like, you know, management changes that have happened at the police department have also changed the dynamic of how we coordinate with our local police department. And also, you know, maybe whether or not this is actually the long-term solution that we need to be investing in.
Well, I can say that the chief and I are aligned because they benefit from having their officers cycle through the PD while also being in the schools. So, you know, I want to maintain the, you know, what the second officer with more time is bringing us. I don't want to lose that, and I want to increase how they're supporting us. I also don't want to compromise on safety. So, you know, he came to me about this decrease in data and said that some of the incidents are happening after school, and that's what they're dealing with. It's our kids, but they're after school. So what can we do? And my response is, you know, we have other needs, preventative needs, that I don't want to sacrifice. So the ball is in my court now to give him a proposal. And so what I would do at the same time is bring it to the board. So, you know, we have an MOU for two SROs right now. That is where it is. So it's up to us to, if we want any changes in that, because we already have that guaranteed at this time. But I, I agree. I think we can allocate resources a little bit differently based on the data that we're seeing. So that's something I'll bring to the board.
Okay. Okay. Better.
Thank you very much. Again, you'll hear more about the personnel matters, proposals, as you hear from principals. The overall budget drivers you will hear repetitively from our administrators are the increase in utilities, we did receive the health insurance, that's separate, that's wages. The health insurance increase is 9.4%, which is less than we thought, which is great. Cathy O will touch on some maintenance projects across the district. Other than that, I want to commend our principals for bringing the most lean budgets. They brought that to me, they took it very seriously, and that's what they're bringing to you. The second page in your, just want to highlight this where it says proposed budgets here in your packet. This is very important to keep in mind because when you see the school-based budgets, it's going to say things like minus 200%. And that's not an accurate reflection of the whole budget. The reason the high school and middle school have this big reduction is because we took out the contracted service for the nurse and ombudsman for Lakeside. Okay? So if you want to know their real increase or decrease, we, Cathy O calculated that for you here.
Just so it gives you an apples-to-apples comparison rather than...
That's on the...
So that's here. So when you see their percentage, this is, this is the accurate percentage. This takes out the, the removal of the nurse and the removal of the Lakeside contracted service. This is the actual here. So the middle school and high school have both of those things. LRTC has neither of those things, and all the elementary schools just have the nurse. Okay? So that's why we provided this for you today. Any questions about this before we turn it over to our first principal?
I have the middle school.
All right, we'll start. Principal Perry Hunt, thank you.
My name's Carrie Hunt, I'm the current principal of Kingswood Middle School. I'm happy to present the middle school 200, 25, 26 proposed budget for our finance committee. KRMIS projected enrollment for next year will be 330 students, that's 169 eighth graders and 161 seventh graders, which ironically is the exact same as our current enrollment. A little bit different in our grade level numbers, but 330 is what we have right now. We are currently fully staffed for professional teachers, but as Caroline alluded to earlier, we have six open part-time support staff positions that we're still continuing looking to fill. We have had a very successful start to the school year and are thankful for the continued support of the school board and taxpayers. I'd like to highlight some of the work that we've done at the middle school over the last year, primarily with our, the budget, although it was a default budget, we were still able to utilize some of that funding in some pretty unique and exceptional ways. One of the things that we focused a lot on last year at the middle school and continue to is our career readiness programming and connection with the middle school students with programs at the Lakes Region Tech Center. Our students change, as our students change, it is important that we're always teaching and engaging students in that change. To do so, we have been developing tech career curriculum. In classes, students are asked to think about what they want in their life and what they're, when they're older, and they can meet, can complete career inter, interest surveys. They think whether they want to go to college, a tech school, or want to just work after high school. They research these different careers and consider the budgetary needs. They review graduation, high school graduation requirements, and read through programs of studies. They learn the pathways and begin to organize their thoughts about their own pathways. In addition, students continue to be able to tour the tech center and participate in the classes of their interest. The tech center teachers have been very welcoming to the KRMIS students and have planned lessons that the students can join. The tech center students have also been very welcoming. They take our students under their wings and teach them the ropes of many of the classes. They also answer questions that middle school students might have. It's been a great experience for both sets of students. In our career readiness class in tech, we've added simulation kits, tech careers like welding, which I believe Caroline was actually able to see in one of our job cert, they did a job fair that they were able to simulate. We've even had community members insist in the instruction of different simulators, actually one of our SROs. They've enjoyed these hands-on activities that were included with the simulation kits. Students completed courses by hosting a career fair, and they were invited to attend the career fair, and they share their learning. This work all aligns with the fortune of the learner and would allow more students have access to type of alternatives, education on a regular basis, increasing engagement, participation, and self-esteem in our students. Another thing that we have been doing is increasing student voice. All school and counseling programs that are incorporating student voice in our daily activities, creating a positive culture, inclusive, and engaging for all. When students are heard and valued, they develop stronger sense of ownership and responsibility of their own learning. We continue to foster this through our counseling center, and I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to our budget requirements. Overall, our budget reflects operational costs for this population. Most accounts have been decreased or are level funded. There is one large request that I'll highlight in a minute that does take our overall budget to an increase of 3.5%. Adjusted some lines in order to count for changes with important purchases. General increases for specific line items are due to necessary replacement of furniture in a few departments. And an increase in industrial arts and career programming, books media line to account for an online curriculum, but we have decreased the other lines in the industrial arts to compensate for that. There's an increase in books print media line for some departments to account for the changes in many of online subscriptions. And the largest one is an increase in the maintenance projects to better support the needs of our students. I want to remind the budget committee that two years ago I proposed a counseling center, and that was unfortunately at that time taken out of the budget. I proposed it again last year, and it was approved by the budget committee, but unfortunately because of the default budget, we were not able to fulfill that. So again, I am asking for the creation of our counseling center at the middle school. It is not uncommon for the public school main offices to be a busy hub. KRMIS is no different, and the current space was not conducive to the safe, tranquil counseling centers that are meant to be provided. So we tried something new a few years ago and relocated both of our counselors upstairs into a larger classroom space. We've had extremely positive experience accessing supports more frequently. Unfortunately, the space is still makeshift. There's confidentiality concerns, one, we have partitioned walls in one of the areas for the counselors. And delivering group and individual services in the larger area of the classroom while there's still the smaller counseling areas outside of that has become a little bit hard. Due to the unforeseen circumstances of the dedicated space to offer group services, we try to move around as best we can. In addition, individual sessions need that privacy. Having a dedicated counseling space would provide KRMIS students a space to self-regulate and need it as possible. As I noted, this was cut from the budget two years ago and approved last year, however, we lost it. Personnel. The general professional staffing levels at the middle school are appropriate next year based on our current projections. In collaboration with Kelly Mask and the District Special Education Department, I am requesting an increase in our special education secretary position from part-time 29 hours to a full-time position with an added two weeks, one week before school starts and one week after school starts. We currently have over 75 identified students at the middle school with one DPT managing that caseload. These numbers warrant more secretarial support as compared to other positions in the district. This putting a large amount of work on our DPT who already has this demanding caseload. The added two-week supports transition from sixth grade to seventh grade that cannot be done necessarily during the school year because files have to be completed at the end of a school year, and we need to turn those over either the week after school ends or the week before, and the transition of services from eighth to ninth grade. All of this, like I said, does need to be done not during the school year, and having that additional two weeks would be helpful. So that is the only position in personnel that I will be requesting. And thank you. If you have any individual questions on budget lines, please let me know.
Are we free? Question. Now that Huggins is pulling up, are those nurses going to end up in the GUEA?
Yes.
So they're lined up and it's going to be attached to payroll anyway.
Correct. So all of these negatives that you're seeing throughout the schools, they're in the 300 object code line, those, that's why we're kind of keeping the cheat sheet, and then I'll do the same when we go over the personnel because that dollar amount will be brought up to salaries and benefits. That's where the shift will be.
I'm going to pay for that without practice insurance. Hello?
I don't keep a carry on that.
We don't carry it, but we'd have to look at it.
The thing is, that's one of the reasons we stayed with Huggins for so long, because Huggins is going to get that deposit there now for insurance.
They have to be school certified.
Try next week.
I'll contact them.
Because this isn't, we were the unusual ones not having the employee.
Yeah, we were the oddball.
Yeah.
It's nice. Don't complain.
Why are we presenting the budget this way this year versus how we've historically presented it?
That's a lot of hand entry. This is free from the system.
Okay.
It's less error and it's less labor-intensive, which is everything I do.
Okay. I can understand that. I will say it's a little bit more difficult to track...
It's clunky.
...the overall series, because you can't really add up the series. For example, like, let's say you were to look at the 520 insurance, you know, it's a little bit more difficult to find the 520 series than the...
I can run the reports by object. Well, I take that back because these are reports that are, and I, I, they're already existing this way. I cannot, I do not do well recreating individual school budgets, software-driven. I can do whole district-wide, at the last night I can do that, absolutely.
All right.
Yep.
And that's really where we start making decisions, we start seeing the entire numbers, so I have one final question. So I think overall, if it wasn't for asking for this, not counseling space, but it was a space that you called it?
Counseling center.
It's a counseling center, okay.
Yes.
If it wasn't for asking for this counseling center, you would be level or decreased?
100% decreased, yes.
Okay, that's, and we approved it last year, so I don't have qualms, I think you gave a great justification last year, and, yeah. No, I have no qualms.
Any other questions for Carrie?
I have a question. I'm up on the ladder.
Okay.
Carrie, is the counseling center in this line repairs building CARE?
That's correct.
That is correct. I had it right, yeah, it's the...
Okay. And that's not, like, the $37,000 difference is...
Is the quote that we've gotten?
It's not necessarily just for that, like, that's the difference.
No, that's, the large amount of the increase is for the counseling center. The rest of what's in there would be what our maintenance department is normally projecting to need for things for the future.
To maintain the building.
Yes.
Not for the future.
Yes, sorry.
Any other questions for Carrie? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll turn it over to Paul. Before we do, I can share that we've had 95 students who experiencing homelessness last year, and we are on track to have the same number this year.
95. What's our, what's our total enrollment?
2,100 around.
That's a good statistic.
It's fine.
To make sure we share with people and we talk to them about the budget.
I agree.
Hi, good evening. My name is Paul Fennar and I'm the principal of Kingswood Regional High School. Please represent this year's proposed budget for the finance committee. A little bit about high school. We are currently at enrollment, grades nine through 12, of 741 students. We are fully staffed with a few exceptions. We have some paraprofessional support staff positions still currently vacant in our special education department. We have two leaves of absence of full-time staff members, well, one full-time, one part-time. In our world language department, we do have a staff member who is out on extended leave, and we also have extended leave now of a special ed social worker counselor, and that is a part-time position. Things to note this year for Kingswood Regional High School, we continue to work towards full competency-based educational implementation. We've worked this year specifically on assessments and rubrics across all of our departments, as well as preparing for the eventual shift to a new grade scale through full faculty discussions with our SAU leadership in conjunction. Additionally, we are excited to announce, as Dr. Eric Kellian pointed out, the introduction of Kingswood Academy Phase One in 2026, formerly known as Lakeside Academy, I suppose still currently, but eventually formerly known as Lakeside Academy. Kingswood Academy will be located on the Kingswood Complex campus. We will employ one full-time certified educator and one paraprofessional support staff, working with approximately 20 to 25 students, both current and prospective identified students for that population, across two half-day sessions. Students will have increased access to services, supports, and personalized learning opportunities in a segregated but proximal location on campus, which we are very, very excited about. I too want to echo Dr. Eric Kellian's sentiments regarding both Nicola Chance and Brady Charlin, who have been instrumental in the proposal of, and really the formulation of all of the logistics behind this concept. And we are excited to imagine a model that really fosters post-secondary success for students by promoting their individual learning pathways, and a model really that fosters that success for students of all abilities and all levels of engagement regardless of how they start their high school career. In terms of our budget, most every budget line has either been level funded or reduced where appropriate. Most notably, for the second straight year, we were able to propose a much leaner athletics budget, thanks to our athletic director and his due diligence. He has helped to offset the selective increases in other supply lines and equipment lines in some of our core content areas by reducing his own lines in his department. Additionally, a reduction in nearly $20,000 was made in our library media center lines thanks to a more conservative and consolidative approach by our new library media specialist. So I want to commend her for her work as well. Additionally, a silver lining to the challenges this year presented by a default budget has been the collectively conservative, fiscally responsible approach to proposing budgeting and spending our taxpayer dollars. To that end, I want to commend our instructional leaders, both academic coordinators and department heads, for the fiscally responsible approach to helping draft this year's budget proposal. The budget drivers are, as they typically have been, increased costs in utilities, maintenance services, fuel, contract, contracted services, and other miscellaneous contracts such as community partners that we utilize for athletics, both Pop Whale and Ice Arena and the NIC. And lastly, this year's proposed budget at Kingswood Regional High School will feature an overall bottom-line decrease of 14%. Personnel-wise, staffing levels at the high school have been reviewed using current and projected class sizes for next year, as well as recent longitudinal trends in course enrollments. To that end, we will be reducing, as Dr. Eric Kellian said, by one full-time staff member in the math department at the high school, unfortunately, and we are also proposing one full-time certified educator and one paraprofessional for the Kingswood Academy proposal. And with that, I will turn it over to you folks for any questions.
Well, Paul, I have one. I've had this probably any topic I can think of. Obviously, the way the budget's structured, the volleyball officials are doing it for free, there's no line on the volleyball officials.
I'd have to ask Mr. Beckwith about that.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, there's no, there's no line on it, of course. All the other officials are there. All the other officials are there.
They're getting paid.
They're getting paid because we're using arbiter pay. So there might not be a budget and I have requested if anyone needs a new GL account line, please let me know and I'll add it to it, which I've done throughout the budget.
Yeah. Yeah, I know they're not willing to quit.
True.
No, that's why.
We pay them.
They get paid through arbiter pay.
Those are friends of mine. It'd be nice to them.
I just have questions and I think I'm just going to rattle down the budget.
Go.
Okay. My first question is the contracted services. What are our, what are our biggest costs in that lineup and that's the first line of the account? The 1,100?
That is the SRO.
That is the SRO?
Yep. The high school SRO.
All right. I noticed that the actual for 2025 is more than what we budgeted for.
I could look to see whether the billing of the SAU office simply didn't break it down appropriately.
Maybe it did not charge the middle school value.
Yeah, I, yeah, because I'm looking. I'm looking at it right now going to middle school.
If I look at the middle school, I'm going to see that they didn't charge.
There's only $3,700.
Okay. So if I were to add those two numbers together, that's a, that's about, yeah, okay. That answers that first question. My next question is the tuition on non-spec ed at HRHS. What's the biggest cost that, I see that's going up about $35,000.
That's because we have three students, two for open enrollment and one for.
Oh, God, okay, so that's tuition for?
Requirement.
That's three kids.
Yeah.
Those are three heads, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, that's for those two kids at Prosswick County and the best, best interest, you said, or is it the?
Best interest.
Okay, yeah. Going down, the NIC, we give the NIC, they card, I thought they were nonprofit, they charge as rental fees?
We have an MOU that we've had ever since and it has not gone up.
Okay.
Yep. Use our facilities. We definitely use that.
I know, give it an MOU, is there any way we?
Yeah.
The NIC is on page four, 1420, 310.
$150? Oh, no, $16,000.
I just, I didn't, I didn't realize we actually even paid them, which isn't, I could understand why, we really.
I read all into it, it's, it's very interesting.
Even if, and anyone else doesn't care, I would just like to see the MOU, I like to see those documents.
Absolutely, but I can remember, it's funny how you asked that, I remember digging deep into it going, okay, really, what is this for? What was the intent? So I go back to the, the discussion in the meeting minutes, way back whenever that was. And what it was is they wanted not just Governor Wentworth, other, I think Brewster as well, to put in every year for, it's like a turf replacement, just like what we have and that was what it was, is to be able to replace whatever when the time came and have all the people using all the end.
Yeah, because I know you said that dirt track.
Well, that was not a track.
I mean, it was something.
It was, it wasn't, our kids were on that track, yeah. And it wasn't, you know, it wasn't even mentionable.
The line beneath that, miscellaneous contracted SVCS athletics?
That is a lot, but the majority of the increase, as Paul had said, was the ICE and, yeah.
Oh, the ICE?
The ICE time at the, at the Pop Whale.
They increased it?
Oh, yeah.
Well, they had to, they couldn't get their enterprise fund.
It's not, the full budget is not just the ICE time, but the increase is that.
Page seven, that's the 2410442 copy.
Copy.
No, I'm not even going to touch that one. Sorry, I brought it up. You gonna make it? On page eight, the 262430 line, repairs building care, so that's going about $17,000 to $80,000. What are, what are the, what's the, kind of the biggest new projects that you're anticipating, Paul, at the high school that are kind of driving that up a little bit, but also that it will take a bulk of the $80,000?
Off the top of my head, I can't think of any. I didn't propose any to Sarah Christo, so those were the things that she's identified.
She's a sheet of that. Kathy's going to touch on facilities as I'm going to start.
But that was the personnel.
Oh, it's just personnel?
Yeah.
So if you don't have an answer right now, we can always flag it and go back to that.
So you're going to see an increase like that in every school where it's $10,000 to $15,000 based on what is needed for building care. Specifically, we can get that information for you. I do know you'll hear about that for Crescent Lake for bathroom flooring.
Yeah.
So it varies by school, the project varies by school. We always provide that as part of the deliberative presentation as we talk about warrant articles and we know when we're putting this in every single school, so we'll have that for you.
Okay, so are we, are you saying, because usually we present on the additional warrant article for capital expenditures.
That's true.
So not necessarily, like, I'm just curious what, because of, you know, if a main driver in a budget is going to be projects, people like to know that we're investing in the buildings and keeping them safe and doing preventative maintenance, that's, I think, something taxpayers care about that will help us. So I'd love to know what kinds of projects are, and I was going to ask that about the maintenance at the athletic fields too, and notice our actual fiscal year 25 is only 15. That's the bottom.
Page is that?
Page eight, that's the last budget line.
That's because we had a budget freeze.
Okay, and that's part of the freeze? Kind of assumed that, but I just wanted to check. Okay.
Budget freeze and that is another disclaimer essentially that you're going to hear as a broken record. We froze mid-March and when I say froze, I think everyone in the room can attest.
We froze.
Yes, we froze.
Solid. So that's why we didn't spend that full account.
Numbers are lower. Please don't use that as.
The need.
Yeah.
And my last question is page nine of the 2640431 contracted services equipment. What's the bulk of?
What page then? I'm sorry, I was. Contracted services equipment. Those would be, I can get a full list of that, Sarah, I've asked Sarah for a full list. That is all the contracted service, contracts we have for preventative care for, I mean, it could be everything from fire suppression to pest management to the septic, to the safety, to, you know, to the HVAC, to the, it's all those contracts for the infrastructure.
I don't need a full list. I think, I get, I get a general, I get, I get the gist.
Too soon.
He couldn't help himself.
Those are all my questions.
I had mine. Ladies, do you have anything?
No questions, but I am, I'm excited about the Kingswood Academy. I think that's fantastic.
Yeah, that's going to be great.
Nicole was here, she's really about starting.
Nope, nope.
The offer.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. So next, Kathy Tatro for LRTC.
I was just trying to think, I had it electronically, I apologize, you know, to me, I like to get the answer right. Right now.
I'm going to wait for you.
I could have used that little printing.
Oh, yes.
I could have on this one.
Everybody has their sheets now? All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone, I'm Kathy Tatro, I'm the Lakes Region Technology Center principal. I'm happy to present the LRTC 2627 proposed budget to the finance committee this evening. I'd like to share with you some of the basic facts about our school. Lakes Region Tech serves Region Nine CTE students, which includes Governor Wentworth students, Farmington, Multonboro, and Prospect Knottson High School, Warrenstead students, Middleton students, all of which attend our center. We're very happy to have those students attending our center. And as part of our services, we include students from all of those high schools. Our current enrollment is at 2526, reported as 265, which is one less than last year and about the same, has been pretty stable for the last few years. We are currently offering 15 programs for our students in grades 10 through 12. We also provide multiple courses for our KRHS students, including business courses like personal finance, metals, small engines, and our facilities work as an outreach for our sixth through eighth grade students, working very closely with the middle school and with all of our elementary schools through our ambassadors programs and through our current outreach to not only recruit students but allow them to explore their career pathways with the new incentives to have kids figure out what they want to do as part of their career explorations in the eighth grade. Dr. R. Kellian and I and the admin team discussed last year moving that requirement from ninth grade down to eighth grade so that when students get ready to make their selections for freshmen, they have already, with their parents, know that information in advance to help them make appropriate course selections for their, their future needs because we've talked about our future is our career and our careers are our future. It's up to those folks to figure that out and to fulfill those needs. Our professional staffing is complete. We had approval for additional teaching assistant for our programs last year, but due to budget constraints, we did not fill that position. I'm not asking for that position again this year for the fact that we've been able to service the students as we are currently staffed. We would like to consider it for future consideration, maybe in a year or so, but we also need to consider some of our professional staff because of the number of programs we're offering and the addition of a new program in marine tech. The budgetary cycle will also ask us to move some of those positions out of Perkins as they stand now and into local, but those are things that we will work in over the next years, just as put in your mind to plant that seed for, for years to come. Couple of notable additions, like I mentioned, our marine tech program had a successful launch this current year and we'll be moving the class into work-based learning phase of that program as we move into second semester. As we move ahead, again, we're going to plan to shift that growth also in other areas like health science. We have an approved program, course rather, for allied health. We are going to want to move that forward in the next couple of years. And then again, we have some other additional interests in AP course for personal finance and things like that, which will be the first of a CTE AP course offering in New Hampshire area, so that will be interesting to see that move forward. Now, the reason why I share all this with you is because I, we, most of our programs that we are looking at making changes in are things that take multiple years. Marine Tech took us almost six years to get to a launch position and it's important that we do the background and lay the foundations for those things to, to not only be fiscally responsible, but also have all of the additional curriculum and approvals and things that we need to make sure they're going to be successful as we move them forward. As noted in our budget sheets, most of our accounts have been decreased, or level funded for this budget cycle. We've made those decisions in an effort to be fiscally responsive to the current local budget concerns. Any item that we could level fund, we did. Some were decreased to help tighten up our belts and in cooperation with those regional needs. Some areas of the budget will increase due to those market costs, insurance things, fuel costs, water, sewage, all of those things that we share across the district and distribute amongst the different schools. And you're going to hear more about that as the process goes forward. The committee and admin have those budget sheets obviously in front of you, that's when you'll be able to take a look at where those, those changes are taking place. And as you have come to know, the main budget drivers are usually increasing utility costs and maintenance costs and the expenditure. Any notable reductions are due to our ingenuated efforts to apply for and receive grant funding. We've done a really good job of being able to include some of our IRCs, which are industry-recognized credentials and the background that goes along with those things into grant monies and we received those last year and applied them and we plan to apply for them again. We also are maybe looking at a transportation grant for the coming year, which will afford us an opportunity to maybe purchase a van under that grant. Those are available through Perkins and we look forward to making those challenges a reality for us. We have had several of our staff members go through training programs through the district for becoming bus drivers and van drivers so we can transport some of our kids to their work-based learning sites and our off-site classes like at Good Hugh and things like that and go to their other programs. The overall increase is noted here at 6.14% despite our efforts to level fund or reduce and or delete any of those costs over the last two cycles. The main increases in those areas are the shared costs that seem to be always on the , on the rise, so I look forward to your questions about that. Our personnel has not changed, like I said, and we will entertain any questions or concerns that you have about what we proposed so far. Any questions for?
I know, I talk to everybody else when I get nervous.
It's after seven o'clock. I'm getting there.
Before I go down the list.
Go down the list.
All right, is that okay?
Yep.
The student liability insurance, I noticed that was zeroed out.
Two years ago and that was due to, they're being covered on the Primex, that was a conversation.
Okay, because I noticed, it says it was budgeted in 20, for fiscal year 26.
And then we took it out.
Okay, because I noticed actual for 20, we budgeted for 2025, then we spent, then we budgeted for 2026. I assume we've spent none.
Correct.
And so now we're going to remove it from the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, because it's covered by Primex. All right. That just was confusing to me, I was like, why did we budget and not spend anything and then budget again and now we're going to remove it?
Well, we didn't come out until after the fact that it had already, it had been covered. That was one of the things that had come up and then we said, oh, wow.
So when we re-upped with Primex, we didn't realize that that was coverage that they provided to us. We had budgeted for additional supplemental.
Yes, for liability purpose when they were offsite.
That's perfect. On page two, the 130735.3039, the replacement multi, I know that's a new line.
Multimedia, yeah, I have it right here. Kathy, do you want to?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Your justification.
Which line, you said it gets multimedia, page two?
731 or 735? Yeah, I'll say that.
I said 735.3.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a whole bunch of them.
I have it right here. So it's replacement, the program had a budget line for new equipment, but no new budget, but no budget line for replacement equipment, so we added the replacement equipment line. And what, I don't know, it's just, it's on the 300. Yeah. It's because we're really keying in on what is new and what is truly replacement. If it's new, it's something I never had before.
Okay, so that.
The whole program.
Right, exactly.
So that helps us keep track of when we're buying new equipment that will need to be replaced in the future or produce replacing existing equipment.
Absolutely.
That, to me, makes real sense. Okay.
Why is the percentage coming up as a year up beyond the farm margin? Shouldn't that be an increase?
The way the software handles that.
Okay. That's not handling it properly.
I don't, I would, I would almost disagree because it's not, but, but the budget line didn't exist, so it can't increase over something that didn't exist previously.
But there's a, there's still a difference.
I, I can see it's 2300.
Yeah.
But what, how, how would it increase as a percentage, a thousand, I mean, there's nothing, there's no baseline to see the percentage increase.
In every other line, there's a increase or a decrease, even if there are zeros in replacement.
Oh, yeah, that, that's what, I look at the difference, that line before, that tells us that it's been subtracted or, I mean, it's my personal preference.
So if this account didn't exist prior.
Correct.
So even though it says $0 for 25, 25 and 2026, that, it should just be like a line there because it actually didn't exist.
Right.
So for. So it's four this year, so it's a brand-new account.
I noticed a contracted telephone service went up. I mean, now, okay.
Thank you.
I think I know why we're going up.
Those are all through I T, so internet and telephone are all through I T.
I assume we'll get a presentation from Paul and all of that stuff.
Internet is usually, there's no, usually no variation because the contract has been solidified because it's all through the E-rate process, which is a federally funded.
Program will be here.
Yeah, and then the telephone, it is the usage, there's variance on that. So the base amount is a specific amount every month, but then the usage depending on how it's used and long distance and all like that.
Um...
There's a fluctuation of that.
The snow removal.
Oh, new contract for Wolfboro Town.
Oh, the town of Wolfboro?
I'm sorry, for all the schools in the town of Wolfboro.
Okay.
I mean, all of them had new, new snow bids, but...
So we bid all of our Wolfboro schools?
We bid all of the district and...
I know, but we bid the Wolfboro schools as a whole? Or did we, okay, so we don't do the schools separately?
Well, they're separated out on the bid specs. Yes, they are.
And someone bid on?
All of them.
And they won the bid for all of them?
Yeah.
Okay, and how do we?
How do you guys pick that bid?
How do we pick it?
Yes.
I mean, obviously, did they bid properly? Did they follow the instructions? Did they submit it on time? Because if they don't submit it on time, it's not accepted and that's in the bid specs. We just, I take a spreadsheet that I create once we've opened the bids up and apply all of the numbers to it and whoever comes out the least expensive, barring any issues.
So they meet the bid specifications and then lowest bid meets the specifications?
The one thing I am finding is, in moving forward, this has never been an issue in the past, but it is now. It's the use of sand and salt. It is excruciating. So I think maybe in the past, snowplow people did not charge as much. They might have charged a flat amount, but now they're charging by the product they use and the number, the labor that they use to spread it. So what the, the solid number is the actual plowing of the snow. That is a base bid, that won't change. But if they have to move it or remove it, the snow, there is a fee involved and they list what equipment they have and how much they'll charge per hour. So I try to put, you know, obviously some amount in there for the removal or the sanding and salting, but it was astronomical with the new vendor.
How do we, when we, oh, I guess, so you put them all out for bid and someone won? So how do we, like, for example, how do we cost that or know the difference in cost for Lakes Region Tech Center versus the high school?
Because it's listed on the bid form.
But how do we determine, like, okay, so Lakes Region Tech Center, what area? Because the two buildings are joined, how do we determine? Like, is it just like one or two parking lots? Is it like, how do we decide what?
I leave that up to maintenance because there's a map and maintenance meets with everyone who does the bid to say, this is the Lakes Region Technology Center. And if the contractor has a question, they'll talk to maintenance about where is it? So therefore, they know how to submit the bid based on the form designating Lakes Region Technology Middle School or High School or Crescent Lake.
So someone could theoretically win the bid for?
No, I do overall number. No, 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 I add it all up. So the complex, I'll add it all up. Crescent Lake is separate, Carpenter is separate.
Okay, but the Kingswood Complex is its own?
But it's, the form has it separated out because we have budgets in every school.
Got it, so then it's, okay, and that's kind of, that gets to, I think I was struggling to ask my question. How do you make sure it's allocated properly to each budget? Okay, so we do that, that's part of how we calculate?
And if they don't submit the invoice correctly, we get right on it and tell them they need to break it out by school once again.
Okay. That's good to know. That was just because you don't want to be overcharging one school's budget versus another? You want to make sure it's attributed?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about that? So like for internet, Kathy, so like in the high school budget, they have a budget line for internet access. They share a building with the L R T C and the L R T C has a separate figure for that internet access. So that, that number combined is the total building bill and we're getting charged for the building? Or we have two access points for internet?
The internet bill is extremely complex, but it's separated out by I P address. We have I T, the director, let us know which ones go to which buildings. So there's, you know, the middle school, the high school, Lakes Region Technology Center. It's all through him.
So we get three bills?
We get one bill for three schools.
Okay.
So it's broken out. Everything is always broken out. We're not going to, because how do we, how do we build a budget if we don't have? We have lines for each school. We need to know what each school is not utilizing, spending. So we can't just have one bill for, for the whole entire complex. I, that could be something we could ask Paul to explain, but there's no way that I think we can have one bill for the whole complex. It needs to be broken out. I'm sure there's different.
Not to knock you, Paul, but it sounds like, it looks like Kathy's getting a phone deal. On internet.
We have through that with snow one year, so we're good. We're cool.
Go ahead. Insurance, I assume that's because of our premium increase from Primex?
Correct.
Okay, and why was L R T C seem to be more? I mean, maybe I'm mistaken. It seems to be more than the other and maybe it's because...
Everyone got thirty-one point three-seven percent.
So I missed it. Maybe it just looked like twenty.
I took the total, initially, I take, when I budget for each of the schools for Primex, I base it on their budget. So everyone's charged the fair amount based on their budget and then adding in the total budgets for all of the schools.
Sorry to go back. Oh, here it is. Oh, yeah, there it is. I just, okay. I assume it's also in the high school. All right, my apologies. But that just answers the question for all three.
Thank you.
And...
Any other questions?
I have another question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Thanks. Good to see you all.
Nice to see you.
I'm sorry, can you hear you? What are student body supplies? Where, can you tell us?
Page two. They're combined. Student body.
Okay, that's, those are recruiting and for any, like, our ambassadors program. So that if they, we do an event, like a career fair or something of that event, that's where the expenses of any of those kinds of things will come from that.
And just one more, Kathy. What are supplies community services?
Community services is a very similar line, but those are related to incoming people. Like, if we host something for, I don't know, I'm trying to think of something specific that we would host for that. Oh, one of our events for our end-of-year celebration, if we have something of that event where we have to buy plaques or, we don't have a graduation, so we have something event. We do stalls and we do certificates and we do plaques and things like that. So that's what covers those.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Sorry. You have very low voice and I need to hear you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Other questions? Thanks again.
So next on our agenda, facilities. Kathy will share regarding that.
So I know last year, I read off some statistics, which, you know, the size of the district hasn't changed. We still have about sixty-five, six-hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet to maintain on the district and that doesn't include the athletic fields or some of the outdoor spaces. That's just building size. And based on averages, you know, your maintenance should be taking care of fifty thousand square feet, which would equate to thirteen staff members. We have four full-time maintenance staff and one full-time director. And of course, the director is a working director, as we all know. So we are definitely understaffed. They definitely need the help, that additional person. Last year, actually in F Y twenty-four, when I had brought this forward last year, there were two-thousand-one-hundred-twenty-eight work orders that were submitted through school due, which we try to make sure that everyone enters any requests for any maintenance whatsoever through school due. It doesn't always happen, but last year, there were two-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-four school due work orders. And like Sarah said, that all, I tapped into her because she is the guru of the paperwork. But it certainly doesn't include the, all the little things that when everyone stops a maintenance person in their building while they're there, they'll ask for something more to be done. This past year, our maintenance crew and of course, our custodial crew too, but maintenance was really the spearhead of coordinating all that took place with Carpenter, with the ceiling collapsing and having to shut down the school and to move the students. Also, in a budget freeze, where we couldn't spend the money to hire out. They were there morning, noon, and night. And I'm sure they went home many days with sore muscles from all the moves that they did. They also took over the maintenance of the grounds, which we normally outsource because of the budget freeze, and they mowed the lawn all in this Wolfboro area because normally we had an outside landscaper do that. So they took on a whole lot and I commend them. I cannot believe the work that they did, the fabulous work that they did tirelessly without complaint. But we need another maintenance person and them.
Okay. Any questions?
I think my comment is, last year, did we propose two new maintenance staffs?
One.
Okay. Because I know the year before that, we proposed taking a part-time to a full-time.
We took Sarah, that was half-time custodian, head custodian, and half-time maintenance. And we moved her full-time maintenance. And that also freed up the half-time head custodian here, which we made full-time. So essentially, we made two half-time, additional two half-time personnel. So we made the head custodian a full-time position that had been half-time and we took the half-time maintenance position and made it full-time.
Okay.
And that was three, two, three, I think?
No, I think it was two now.
Two.
I just was reviewing it actually as part of the...
It wasn't last year for this current year.
It was the fiscal year twenty-five request, so it was in twenty-twenty-four. So, yeah, that was almost two years ago now. Oh, and I remembered in last year's presentation, you gave us an estimate. I'm trying to remember the exact number of how many maintenance people you think we need versus how many we actually have.
Based on standards, it should be thirteen.
And we have?
Five.
Five. I know that's something we've discussed a lot about when we ask for new positions, looking closely at maybe investing there a little bit more.
And I know that the principals would agree that the investment in another maintenance person would be very helpful because it's prioritized. I mean, they have to reprioritize all the time. Not everything can get done. We certainly don't like to contract out. We do it here and there, every now and then. I mean, Phil and Sarah are doing those handicap walkways. We have contracted with a handyman to do a little bit of work in one of the buildings just because there's not enough time for them to go around and they need to maintain what's there.
I don't think I left you recognizing, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. I still think we can say enough about the maintenance people. I mean, the ceiling collapse and the fact that they just...
They were incredible.
Bumped it up and went out. It's just part of everyday work.
Incredible.
They were there for the collaboration and listening and obviously the feedback from them on the logistics of moving stuff. But Caroline would say to me, is this, have you thought about this or is this going to happen? I thought it's all been done. Maintenance just is just, I can't speak highly enough about them.
They ran a meeting and made four trips in one afternoon.
Before, I think we even realized.
To move the classrooms from Carpenter to the church and the art center and Crescent Lake.
And of course, they were all involved when the modulars, you know, were delivered. They helped with that, with the site, with the placement, with all the utilities and coordinated all of that, which was no small feat. That took up a lot of time, it took up a lot of my time, but it was obviously highly, it needed to get done, it had to get done in a certain order. Everyone had to approve it, fire department and the code, the town. But they were all a part of that too and just, and moving stuff back to Carpenter and into the modulars so that the teachers could be ready was just nothing more than... Yeah. They're like, I call them our fairy godfather and mother because they're just unbelievable.
And one thing I'd like to bring up is transportation. There's a lot of people in Brookfield who think that buses weren't empty. Yeah, it's Brookfield, I know.
They are pretty empty probably running out.
We were talking about this in a service meeting and they mentioned it. There are buses running through town that have two kids on them. Seventy-two passenger buses with two kids.
I can reassure you that Marion would not be doing that unless it's the last two kids at the end of the route or the first two.
They're at the end of the Wolfboro route, the one that goes to more than part of town and then into Brookfield.
I'm sure, I'm sure the bus schedules are on that.
It's the same, it's the same blue bus that ran when I was probably, it's still the one I remember.
Our bus schedule is listed on our website.
I heard the purple bus, that's the one that probably still goes by Sewer Road and everything.
I would recommend that they look at that so they can understand.
They have an area yet or me as a...
I have this coming, if you recognize me yet. A few years ago, it was my daughter's bus that was being criticized. And I asked her, is your bus full? She went, yeah, it's totally full. I said, well, why would there only be a couple of kids on there? She goes, they're at the end of dropping off or at the end of picking up.
Every bus is empty. Every bus is empty probably starting at around six A M. Because I haven't picked up any kids. And every bus will be empty at seven-thirty before it picks up the kids for the elementary school because they just dropped them all up at the high school, middle school. So, yeah, there will be an empty bus that drives by, you know. There'll be an empty bus that drives right through downtown Wolfboro and drives out to Ospey to go pick up all the Ospey kids and another one for Effingham and another one for New Durham. So, you know, I say that to people all the time, like, yeah, they just dropped, they just did their job. That's good. The bus should be empty at seven-thirty. Hopefully, all the kids got to where they needed.
I have a question.
Go.
The warrant articles, are we going to review that on Thursday? Some of the warrant articles that the...
We don't usually, but...
We don't usually hear in these meetings?
We know that the Budget Committee had recommended building and maintenance.
Yeah. Because I know, I feel, last year, you were here last year.
Not in these meetings.
Yeah.
Typically, we bring those to, for the full board because there's a committee that already reviewed them for, for building and maintenance purposes. So those warrant articles, you know, the building and maintenance will bring it to the full board. And then there are others.
You got three of us here.
I know, so definitely.
And Caroline has said that, you know, the student wellness coordinator.
Student wellness, we'll propose that.
Are there going to be a few other ones?
Well, special education.
Well, that, I mean, that I know and then the other one, but I mean like...
Special education.
There'll be a, okay.
So special education was zeroed out, you know, during our, we had a hearing for that, that trust. So we'll be proposing that as well. So those, we bring those to the December meeting.
I'm also wondering if we want to consider reviewing having a health insurance trust so that when we get premium holidays, we start taking those premiums and putting them into the trust for if there are going to be assessments. But I think...
If there are going to be assessments, if, currently, if.
I will, I will say if. My personal opinion is more of when. But I'd like to be optimistic. But if our health insurance risk pool is going to need to send mid-year assessments to address increase, you know, unexpected increases in claims and other things, I think we need to start considering saving our premium holidays. Otherwise, we're depriving the taxpayers of savings in good years and of special education reimbursements that the state has allowed us this year to utilize to pay for that bill and whether or not they will in future years. Who knows? So I would feel more comfortable that we start saving our premiums and putting money aside into that if we're going to have unexpected health insurance costs. So I think, I think that's something I'd personally like the committee to explore, but I am one.
No, I agree.
Okay. Do you guys have any other?
That's a full board conversation.
It's a full board, yeah.
Yeah, but I think, I think it's something I'd like us to review to present to the board. Similar to how Buildings and Maintenance reviewed warrant articles and present those to the board. I'd like to.
That is your problem.
Establishing.
To share with your.
I would like to do that. Would you be so kind as to permit us to do that?
Yes, I can be very kind, allow you to do that.
Okay. Because I think it's worthy of us establishing, creating a proposal to establish a health insurance trust and to save money from premium holidays and additional money left over at the end of our fiscal year to deal with rising insurance costs, considering what happened this month or last month and this month.
That's it. You done? Maybe? Anybody have comments?
Thank you very much. Until tomorrow night, in these rows, we'll be filled with elementary principals.
Make a motion to a chairman.
Second.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all.